For Wednesday, November 6th, 2024, to order at 4:03 PM. Ms. Olson, roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Here.
Director Carey?
Here.
Director Haley?
Here.
Director Jorgensen?
Here.
Director Malpakum?
Here.
Director Nelson?
Here.
Director Ott?
Here.
Okay, welcome all. All seven board members are joining this meeting remotely. Just to let the community know, due to inclement weather conditions, the district was closed today for all activities. Our schools were closed, and that was an operational decision made by Superintendent Gall to keep our community safe. It's been a while since we had a remote board meeting, so we will work through some of the challenges that may come up. I, what I will ask board members to do is, if you are not speaking, remember to mute yourself so that we don't hear any cross-talk or anything that could happen. With that, please join me as we observe, observe a moment of silence. Thank you. I just want to let the board also know about one thing. I am in the administrative building. It would be much easier for me to facilitate this process from here with the resources that are available at the administration building, but Ms. Olson informed me that the internet connection out here has been off and on throughout this day. So if I drop off, Vice President Haley would be the acting board president who would run the board meeting until I jump into the conversation, just so you guys are aware of it. With that adoption of the agenda, Director Carey, can you please make the motion to adopt the agenda?
Absolutely. I move that the Board of Education adopts the agenda as presented after removing Action Item G1, Board of Education Priorities, which can be addressed during the next in-person regular or special meeting of the board.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Director Bankus? Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Haley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the agenda has been adopted with the modification that Director Carey proposed. We do have executive session this evening for roughly 90 minutes. Director Ott, can you please make the motion to move into executive session?
I move that the Board of Education convenes into executive session to discuss legal advice per CRS 2464024B, Particular Matter Oracle Contract, and Colorado Springs Education Association Educational Support Professionals and Executive Professional Employee Group Handbooks and Contracts.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Haley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, we will enter into executive session and join the regular board meeting at approximately 5:30 PM.
Okay, I'll stay in until the.
So, my Ashwathams, Melissa, we ready to go? Okay, great. Earlier this, we are reconvening in public session after executive session. Good evening to our community, this cold November evening, as you are aware. Due to inclement weather conditions, our school district was closed, but the board still had some pressing issues that we had to address, and so we are holding this board meeting in a remote environment to ensure that the board is responsive and timely in taking the necessary actions, so our superintendent and staff can also get the necessary guidance from the board. With that, earlier this afternoon, the board adopted the agenda by removing Action Item G1, Board of Education Priorities, which can be addressed during the next in-person regular or special meeting of the board. We have returned from executive session, and there is an additional need to modify the agenda. So I'm going to make the motion here to modify the agenda, and then the board can move forth.
I move that. Information. Are you able to make the motion as a chair, or would you like me to?
Okay, go ahead, Jason.
Thank you. I move that the Board of Education modifies the agenda by adding an action item to approve a contingency transfer for the Oracle Contract 98-328.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Ms. Olson, roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Haley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
Thank you. So the, after executive session, the agenda has been modified by adding an action item to approve the contingency transfer of the Oracle Contract, Oracle Contract. Moving on to the next agenda item, please join me in, in the pledge of allegiance. So if you can, please stand up and.
Look at Jason's screen.
Yeah. And I can start it. I pledge allegiance. You guys can unmute too, if you need to, so you can go on. I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for our citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
For all. Thank you. Since this is going to be virtual board meeting, some of the normal front-end agenda items are going to be suspended for this evening, so we will recognize our students and staff under awards and recognitions at a later point in a different board meeting. Same thing with the spotlight was going to be on the district's team program, and that will happen in a future time. Superintendent's report, Superintendent Gall, do you have anything that you needed to add under Superintendent's report this evening? You are muted.
I will also defer that to the 4th of December. Thank you, President Malpakum.
Okay, thank you. With that, because of the adverse weather conditions, we do not have public present directly in this board meeting to provide their feedback and comments, but public was provided an opportunity to provide their feedback through an online form, and we did receive one public comment during that timeframe, and that public comment came forth from a parent, and I'm trying to get the name of the parent here while I'm. The public comment came from Mr. Dustin Fronton. Mr. Fronton, you're, the board is aware of your public comment that you shared with it. It has been shared with Superintendent Gall, and it will be addressed in a prompt manner. You will hear from the district administration in response to the comment that you made, or the feedback that the board received, and your public comment will also be shared in the board docs for others, for the public to, to be aware of in a transparent manner. Only one public comment was received, and it has been handled. Moving on to special reports, are there any reports from board directors, any board, board reports from board directors? I don't see any hands going up. I do want to give the community and the board an update on the Palmer renovation. As the community is aware, the design team was selected through a rigorous RFP, and the design for the Palmer renovation was awarded to RTA and Perkensement, and during the ensuing couple of months, there has been considerable community engagement. Design concepts were presented at a town hall meeting, and at the last work session, a steering team was also assembled, and the steering team composition, it's a diverse group comprised of staff, parents, community members, other community stakeholders, including students, and that is an advisory group that is going to gather feedback and provide input to the district and the design team, and help in that design development phase of the Palmer renovation. They bring diverse experience and perspective, and we look forward to that process as they prioritize key aspects of the design and shape the design process to align with the needs of the district. They are going to play a critical role in the guiding design process, but to aid the steering committee, the district, along with the design team, which is the RTA and Perkensement, the idea that was proposed was that it would benefit that steering committee to visit some of the schools that the Art, Art Perkensement has been instrumental in designing and new constructions and renovations that, that they have put together. So the steering team will be visiting schools in the Washington DC area to not only help them visualize and look at the possibilities that are available, but also to come back and see how they can integrate those possibilities into the Palmer design process. I just want to let the community know that the district reached out to an outside foundation, and the outside foundation provided the financial support for this trip that the steering team and key personnel from the district will be undertaking in the coming weeks for a couple of days to visit four different schools in the Washington District, Washington DC area, and to bring that overall perspective to the Palmer design process. And in full transparency, two board members will be joining the trip, and Director Bankus, and I will be part of that team that will visit the Washington DC area. I just wanted to be upfront and share that with the community, and also we look forward to bringing back the feedback to the rest of the board from this trip. And again, the funding for this was secured from the Pike's Peak Community Foundation, and none of this is an impact on the district budget or the general fund dollars. With that, that's my board report to the community. With that, we do have a special report today, which is going to be the annual comprehensive financial audit report. Superintendent Gall, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Yeah, I'm really excited to let Dr. Comfort introduce our partners for the audit. This is an annual requirement for our district. Again, we stand very strongly on full transparency and exercising all our abilities to get dollars closest to the students. We're really wrapping up the Esser pieces of the work that the district's been engaged in for several years, and so there are a couple of notes that the auditor will share, and where there are opportunities for the district to improve its grant monitoring, and with that, I'll pass it off to Dr. Comfort.
You're muted, I think.
Mute.
That work? Yeah, okay, sorry, guys. That was like a rookie COVID move there. Geez. Okay, let me, let me start again. Thank you, Superintendent Gall, good evening, board. This is an exciting night for us. It's a, it's a big night in the finance office when we bring the annual comprehensive financial report as well as our audit forward. I'll introduce our partners here in a moment, but first want to acknowledge the work of our team, primarily that led by our senior executive director of finance, Ms. Laura Heronic, she's on our screen. I don't believe Ms. Heronic ever brings anything to the board that is less than 150 pages, and so that just goes to acknowledge the high level of detail and intensity of the work that she does. As Superintendent Gall said, I'm very proud of the, the financial report and the audit that we're bringing to you. You're going to see that we are doing an incredible job monitoring how we spend our money and being very transparent. You're going to see that we've addressed some issues from past years, and you're going to see that we do have some areas specific to our grants department that we need to continue to focus on and tighten, and we have corrective action plans for those. And so I'm going to turn it over to our partners from Forvis. We're joined by Steve and Lisa. I'm going to turn it over to them to go ahead and start working through our, our two different audits, and then we will be available to answer any questions.
Great, thank you so much, Brandon. Can you all hear me okay? Terrific, thumbs up, okay? Excellent, good evening, Superintendent Gall and board, thank you so much for having us. Steve Sauer, managing director, joining from here in Clark Springs. I led the financial statement audit. Lisa Horn, partner, led the single audit, and she'll kind of pick up the latter half of this presentation. But as Brandon mentioned, do want to extend our gratitude to your team. You guys have a terrific team. Audit went very, very well, very timely this year, per the norm, so I really do appreciate that. This is year six of our firm performing these services with you all. A couple of different name changes over that term. Most recently, Forvis Mazaris, you'll see here on screen, not a merger, more of a network change. But anyway, same, same, same firm, same individuals, leadership team, local leadership team providing the work here. Prepare a presentation, keep this somewhat high level, but as I go, please feel free to stop me, interrupt me if there's any questions or items of discussion. Please don't hesitate to do that. Flipping to the next slide, what will begin is just a series of, of, one more slide, please. What will begin is just a couple of bullet points, give you a good high-level summary of the audit engagement. Scope of the audit was very similar to what we've had in the past. You're used to us coming and presenting, much of that has not changed. Third bullet point there on the left side of the screen, there are six charter schools that were managed by the district as of June of 2024. Those are audited by separate auditors, and we communicate with them as part of that process. As you know, the board approved two additional charters to come online during the 2024, 2025 school year, and we will begin that process next year with, with communicating and making sure that those audits are being done properly. The, the document that Brandon was speaking to you earlier is rather lengthy, about 185 pages. It does include both audited and unaudited information. Nothing new, a lot of information contained there, but puts those financial statements into proper economic, financial context, a lot, a lot of good data there, but certainly not everything is subject to our audit procedures. Middle of the screen, you'll see just a small call out to accounting policies. This is a real sensitive area during the audit to ensure that those policies are appropriate, that they comply with external regulation that we're monitoring, and that any new standards are evaluated and incorporated. The last couple of years, the district has had a rather long list of new standards to adopt. It has kept Laura and the team rather busy. This year, there were no new standards, so we all got a little bit of a reprieve, but, but no new items, which means the disclosures that you will flip through or have flipped through are going to be very consistent with what you've seen in the past. Turning to the next slide, you'll see another list of items, different estimates, different areas of focus for us. This list is going to look real similar to what we would have presented and reported on last year. This list here on the left, management estimates, this is probably more than three quarters of the, of the district's balance sheet, so assets and liabilities and net position. These estimates make up a significant part of what is being reported there on the district's balance sheet, and so as you would expect, those make up a big part of our audit program in evaluating those estimates and looking at how management evaluates those, calculates those, and the like. Some of these have been topics of conversation in the past, either related to new accounting standards, related to different activities within the district. All of these are relatively commonplace, but I will point out that we did not have any findings or concerns or any formal controlled efficiencies that were communicated with respect to these items. And again, I mentioned that by way of accolades to your finance team, they do a terrific job of monitoring these and ensuring that these are within the acceptable bounds from, from the standard. So again, kudos to the team, a lot of work goes into this, and, and no concerns or items that, that were. There on the right side, you'll see just a couple of disclosures. These could be areas of interest for, either for the board or for other folks within the community that are reading and flipping through your financials, and so we want to make sure that we're attuned to some of those in, in reading and evaluating the, the information being communicated. Next slide speaks to just the overall results of the audit, and again, we'll continue the, the theme here, that there were no recorded numbers changes to the district's financial statements, which is again, a great testament to, to your team. There's a lot of, a lot of moving pieces there, and a number of changes that, that we encountered during the year that were evaluated as, as part of that process. There was one item surfaced related to some of the renovation improvement work that began during the 2024 year. As you know, a number of schools have and will continue to receive some improvements on their facilities. The only item we noted was that some of those projects came real close to year end or even crossed over that June 30 year end timeframe, and so there's some special accounting related to those types of activities. That, that dollar amount's about $450,000, was about the, the amount that could or should have been capitalized as part of that project. Not insignificant, but when you look at it in, in the grand scheme of your other capital assets, it's, it's less than 1% of, of that, actually, it's less than one tenth of 1%. So very, very immaterial, more of a administrative item, but given the number of projects that the district has begun, again, a lot of moving pieces, a lot of contractor invoices and billings and things to, to track. So very, very positive results from our perspective, particularly given the amount of, of work that, that was funded by the district at those, at the, at the school locations. Flipping to the next slide, you'll see a little bit of a history of our communications to the board, a three-year timeframe here, and you'll see a, a lot of, of non, non-item or no items reported, which is, which is great. Couple items to, to highlight there. We did observe one material weakness this year related to your schedule of expenditures of federal awards. Lisa will talk about that here in just a minute, but, but somewhat of an isolated item, and she'll cover that in just a minute. Last year, 2023, we did observe one material weakness related to the adoption of a particularly difficult accounting standard around IT arrangements. The, the impact of that was about, you know, just under $11 million, but as I mentioned before, very happy to report that fast forward to 2024, the matters that impacted the, the adjustment, the audit adjustment from last year, those have been corrected and addressed, and as I talked, there are no further concerns or challenges incurred with that. And that's really the theme that we see here on the financial audit front, is in years when there are internal control findings that we observe, district is very adept at identifying the, the root cause, correcting those, and, and we generally do not see repeat concerns there, as kind of as, as you're seeing here on screen. Very bottom of, of this chart, you'll see verbal controlled deficiencies, and these almost always relate to these past adjustments, kind of what I was talking about before with these construction projects that carry over from one year to the next, and there being kind of some special accounting involved. Some of those items, generally, they're, they're pretty de minimis, they're a little bit more technical in nature, but like I said, that your team is very good about addressing those and correcting those in, in subsequent. So let me, let me pause there and take a breath, a lot of information, a little bit of a high-level summary, but before we kind of switch gears to the single audit and the, the federal funds audit, let me pause and just see if there's any questions from board members. Brandon, anything you want to add with respect to this information here?
Yeah, if I can, just jump in real quick. I do want to speak to, A, the areas that have been addressed, and, and I think Steve did a nice job of highlighting those. I do want to speak to that material weakness related to the CIFA. This is a document that you prepare to, to share with the auditors that, that shows your schedule of expenditures. We had a, a new senior accountant working on this for the first time. It was my oversight in not ensuring that, that staff member and their team didn't have prior practice with a document of this size and scope, and so the very first time they did it was at the year-end closeout, when we were submitting things for the auditor. And so that's, that's an unrealistic expectation, and so we're addressing that, and, and when we, when we show or share the corrective action plan, you'll see that part of that corrective action plan is we're going to practice with different data sets to make sure that the creation of the document is not a challenge, that we know how to do that, we've done that before. So I do just want to acknowledge that, that that should have been something that, that I ensured happened prior, but we are correcting that moving forward to ensure that the CIFA, it ended up being correct, but it did take us too long to get that to be correct, and so we will make sure that that doesn't happen again moving forward.
So thank you, Dr. Comfort. Ms. Olson, could you pull down the screen for a minute, so I can see the sharing, stop sharing the document on the screen? Okay, board, now I can see you. Do you have any questions on what has been presented so far? Okay, I don't see anything, so back to you to continue with your presentation. You may want to pull back the document again, Ms. Olson.
Great, thank you so much. And with that, I will turn it over to Lisa to cover the results of the federal funds audit.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Hopefully everyone can hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you. If we can go to the next slide. So as Steve mentioned, I am Lisa Horn, I am the partner over the single audit. Again, wanted to start with a little bit of history. To match Steve's slide, we provided three years, but I really want to take everyone back, Dr. Comfort mentioned pre-COVID era, and when we look at pre-COVID era district, And when we look at pre-COVID era district funding and district expenditures, pre-COVID, the district was spending between 20 and 25 million on an annual basis, and that was what was being reported on that CIFA. Fast forward to 2024, that number is up to 60 million. So that just shows the true number of grants, additional complexity that the district is having to manage in a post-COVID era. In the current year, we did review three major programs. So we reviewed the ESAR program. We reviewed Title I as a result of the prior year finding, and we also reviewed the child nutrition program. On a rotating basis, we like to get through and look at programs every three years, just so they're not sitting for too long. So that COVID, the child nutrition cluster was a program coming off of that three-year rotation. There are no material weaknesses or material non-compliances to report as a result of the current year audit, and that's something that's very important to report. When you have those material weaknesses, you have those material instances of non-compliance. Those are modifications to your opinion, and that really indicates that the district is doing something materially incorrect. And so I'm happy to report there are no material weaknesses, no material non-compliance. We do have two significant deficiencies, which I'm going to go over on the next slide, and no deficiencies to report. So if we can go to that next slide. So the first finding was alluded to, but this relates to internal controls over the schedule of expenditures of preparation. And so, as Dr. Comfort alluded, the document, the CIFA, as we refer to it, is required to be completed by the district on an annual basis and be presented. That is prepared based on the accounting system, and various departments provide information for what needs to be included. The federal government has very specific requirements of what can and cannot be included in that format. And so we did identify that the first few versions of that CIFA did not agree back to the supporting expenditure detail of the general ledger. As a result of this, there were four iterations of the CIFA being provided to us with the difference between that first and final CIFA being approximately 25.6 million. I do want to pause and just reemphasize the point that that CIFA that you have in front of you within that ACFIR is complete and correct. It was verified, complete and correct by the district. It was audited by us, re-verified, checked all the numbers. So the version in front of you is correct and complete. What does that mean? What was the effect of all of this? The effect was that there were some delays in starting the single audit testing, getting off, selecting our programs. When we get that report, we have to review it and make sure we have obtained 40% coverage of your expenditures for our testing, and that determines what programs we're going to look at in the current year. Our recommendation as a result of this is just that the district's document policies and procedures utilized during the CIFA preparation process, making sure that if someone new is coming in, they have detailed instructions on what to follow, as well as implementing a detailed review process to make sure that that second set of eyes occurs over the CIFA to make sure it is complete and accurate when provided to the auditors. The second finding related to the single audit is over the ESAR program. And before I jump in too much to the finding, I want to provide some background context. So the ESAR program can be used for a variety of things, including payroll, non-payroll, which can include indirects, direct, construction expenditures, a variety of things. And so during our testing, we specifically identified that three out of the 25 payroll selections that we looked at didn't agree back to the supporting documentation. So when we review expenditures for our testing, we want to make sure that they are reasonable and necessary for the performance of the grant, that they are recorded in a consistent treatment, and that they are adequately documented and supported. And so for these three items, we didn't identify that they were not adequately supported. The question cost related to these items was just about $2,000. So the total amount of payroll costs for this grant was over 9.6 million. So while there were some small question costs, not material, when we are, we are, as part of the single audit, are required to report items over a certain error percentage threshold. So that that's where this is became a reportable item with that three out of 25 items. But when you look at the true dollar impact of those items tested, very, very small question costs. We also noted that indirect costs applied to the grant were not consistently applied between the quarters, which did result in indirect costs, the district not accounting for all the indirect costs, applying for all those costs that they could. So there's no question cost for that. Really, we recommend that the district strengthen their internal controls surrounding expenditures, making sure anything applied to a federal grant is applied in a consistent method. It includes supporting documentation or details that an individual can review and ensure that it is appropriate and necessary, inconsistent treatment, and adequately documented. The third finding related to the single audit relates to wage rate requirements also for the ESAR program. The federal government mandates that any construction contract funded with federal funds exceeding $2,000, yes, $2,000, so a very, very low threshold that the district has to follow, must have certain internal controls in place over certified payrolls, making sure that the contractors used to complete those construction projects are paid a fair prevailing wage. So this item is a control issue only, meaning that there is no compliance concerns. Contractors were paid appropriately in accordance with the prevailing wage for their position and role. What we did note was that the district didn't have controls in place to identify that certified payrolls were not obtained for all subcontractors for construction projects that occurred during 2024. During our testing, we reviewed two construction projects out of the four construction projects which were applied to the SR funds and did identify this issue. Some of this issue related to some an individual being out of the office for a portion of time. And so we recommend that additional internal controls over this process be added, including cross-training. So if an individual has to be out for an extended period of time, someone else is able to pick up those work. This will help ensure that all certified payrolls or confirmation of no work is received. With that, I'll pause for any comments from Dr. Comfort or questions from the board.
Yeah, if I can, just real quick, thank you for the explanation, Lisa. I just want to speak very quickly on the last item. Because Lisa mentioned it there in the very last sentence. First of all, this is a this is a collaboration between the Finance Office, between our capital improvement team and the Procurement Office. And so that those are those are processes that we continue to strengthen. I just want to make sure and be clear to the board and the community with relation to payrolls, there was nobody paid. There was not an instance where a contractor was paid for not doing work. It was that last phrase Lisa used, which was certifying that work hadn't been completed. So we did miss a few times where we, even though there was no work completed, we're still supposed to submit something saying no work was completed this week. And so that is where our internal control fell short and something we do need to address. But just wanted to make sure the board didn't think we paid a contractor without verifying that they did work. Thank you.
Thank you. Are we done with the presentation?
There's one more slide I can cover.
Okay, can you complete that, and then I can pull it down so the board can ask any questions?
Absolutely. As it relates to the prior year findings, so this was alluded to, but we do do detailed testing over those prior year findings. We become concerned anytime findings are not becoming implemented, where you have the same findings year over year. Both of the findings noted in the prior year, which related to the implementation of GASB96, which Steve covered, is considered fully implemented. The second finding that was noted in the prior year related to special tests and provisions within the Title I program, specifically related to internal controls over the assessment system security. And it related to that there was no checklist or manuals in place to follow, and we did do detailed testing of this, and were able to determine that this was fully implemented during 2024. I want to make the note that it is incredible that we are here today presenting these financial results to you all. When you look at the timing of other districts and when they present their information to the board and when their information is finalized, those report dates are anywhere from late November to early December. Having a report that is fully issued in October allows us and allows the district to provide, it allows us to provide recommendations. So the district was able to understand here are the things we noted for 2023 and put corrective actions in place early on in 2024, 2025, which allows these comments not to repeat. And so that really is a testament to the district's commitment to ensuring that while there may be findings, those items will not repeat as they go forward. I want to thank everyone on the grants team who helped accomplish the single audit. It was a long and lengthy process, but we were able to issue at the same time as the ACFIR, which was everyone's goal. So I do want to extend my gratitude to everyone who helped complete the single audit this year.
Thank you. Ms. Olson, if you can pull the presentation down. Thank you so much. Appreciate all the work that went into this, the collaboration between the district team and our external auditors to the community. The comprehensive financial audit report is attached to board docs. So if you have trouble falling asleep, please go and look at that 188-page document that's attached on board docs. No, I'm just, in all seriousness, I appreciate all the work that has gone into this, and we take our role and responsibility as financials towards of taxpayer dollars seriously. And with that, board, do you have any questions?
President Malpackham, can I close the, can I close the item for you then?
Director Art has a question.
Thank you. Just a quick question. Hopefully, this is more for our own staff, I think, than the accounting firm. Are we still doing internal audits specifically around schools? Okay.
Yes, Director Art, we absolutely are. And in fact, we've started a new practice where we have a rotation where we do internal audits, but we're now really trying to focus on where we have new principles to make sure that they're fully aware of everything that's going on in their system. And so, yeah, continued practice, and we've added a little bit as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Director Art. That was going to be my same question, I think. That stopped a little bit over the pandemic. I'm, you know, I'm glad that we are renewing that again. And any other comments? I don't see anything else. Dr. Comfort, back to you to wrap it up.
Okay, thank you. Just want to again thank Steve and Lisa for coming and joining us. It's a really good partnership. It is a very comprehensive and intense audit. I think I made this joke last year. It continues to be true, which is they basically move in for about a month. I think I see Steve in the office more than I see almost anybody else. So they don't mess around. They come and dig in and do their job, and so we're very grateful for that. I did just want to showcase, I was going to bring a celebration to the board meeting tonight. So of course, it's the one board meeting where we're virtual, but we had a member of the finance team who was invited up to the Association of School Business Officials International to receive an award for District 11, so the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting, specific for our ACFIR. And so just wanted to show that to the board, and also again, Ms. Aronik and the work of her team for the work that they do. It's always cool to bring a trophy home. And I turn it over to you, President Malpackham.
Thank you, thank you. I'm glad that we are able to acknowledge and celebrate this, even in the virtual environment. So is that a department award, or is that an individual award awarded to a specific individual, Dr. Comfort?
It's actually awarded to the district, so I suppose it's your award, President Malpackham, more than anyone. But it came from from the work of the finance team, and again, specifically Ms. Aronik, who is the primary driver behind our ACFIR and our financial program.
Well, thank you, Ms. Aronik, for putting in all the work, and thank you for the audit team in looking at this. And the district does all the work, and the board is just there to accept the award for all the hard work that you guys put in. Thank you. Appreciate it. So moving on to the next item on the agenda. It is consent items. Director Jorgensen, can you please make the motion to adopt the consent items of the agenda?
Yes, I move that the Board of Education adopts all consent items as is in the agenda. Excuse me. The consent items are Resolution 2025-10 American Education Week, November 18 through the 22nd, Resolution 2025-11 Native American Heritage Month, Resolution 2025-12 Family and School Partnership and Education Month, Personnel Recommendations for November 6, 2024, Approval of October 2, 2024 Regular Meeting Minutes, Approval of October 9, 2024 Special Meeting Minutes, Approval of October 23, 2024 Special Meeting Minutes, and Approval of October 30, 2024 Special Meeting Minutes.
Second.
Move the second rule call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Haley?
Director Haley, you were muted.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Aye.
Perfect. Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Malpackham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Art?
Aye.
The eyes have it, the consent items have been adopted as presented. Moving on to the action items on the agenda today. As discussed right at the very top of the meeting, action item G1 was removed, and it will come back in front of the board at a future in-person board meeting. Moving on to action item G2, which is Policy BTF Advisory Committee. Director Nelson, can you please make the motion for action item G2?
I move that the Board of Education adopts a revised Policy BDF.
Second.
Moved and seconded, the board reviewed this information and discussed this policy revision during the September 25 work session and the October 2 regular board meeting. Board, do you have any additional questions or informations, information to discuss at this time? And I see Dr. X is also joining us at this time. Director Art?
Thank you. I am curious where the board and our community will find information about the advisory committees, since they will not be mentioned in this version of the policy.
Superintendent Call or Dr. X, do you want to take this question? Dr. X?
Yeah, good evening. Thank you, President Malpackham. We did add board, on the board docs webpage, front page, we do have the listing of all committees, memberships and charges. They are there, presented for the public to see.
Okay, Director Art, is that answer your question?
That is sufficient for as an answer, yes. I do have concerns that this that I think personally that an advisory committee policy might actually list the policies. But I think that if we're to move forward on that, I will probably have to bring a request for a regulation. Thank you. I just, well, I will add, I would have preferred that we have either the list in the policy or have brought it along with policy to be approved. Thanks.
Is there anything Casby recommends in this regard, Dr. X?
There is not, and we didn't bring them along with this policy as we felt the board had already approved those policies during, or those committees during the charges back in October.
Okay, thank you. Any further feedback or concerns from the board? Seeing that rule call, please, Ms. Olson.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director? Director Haley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Malpackham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
No.
The eyes have it, the Policy BDS, as revised, has been adopted by the board. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is the contract modification to existing Oracle contract. Director Bankus, can you please make the motion for action item G3, modification to existing Oracle contract?
I move that the Board of Education approves the contract modification to the Oracle Contract 98-328 in the amount of $651,480 for expansion fees that include additional licenses and corresponding license support and maintenance.
Second.
Moved and seconded. This is new information. Superintendent Gall, what information do you want to share with the board regarding this such an item?
Now, I'm going to let Chief Odom carry the bulk of the work here. I do want to share though, that as you hear the updates from Chief Odom, that this is not the way that this administration and board seek to have partnerships with some of what I call the predatory companies in public education. And I think you'll hear some of those details here. I appreciate the work that Chief Odom and legal counsel have done to resolve this issue. But again, I stand strong that District 11 seeks to rise above to ensure that more dollars are going towards students and not towards the fine print of contracts some 20 some odd years in the past. Chief Odom?
Thank you, Superintendent Gall. How's the volume? Can everybody hear me okay? Great. Thank you. So as Superintendent Gall indicated, I'm bringing to you tonight a contract modification for a one-time fee to pay for what we call an expansion fee. Now, when this, this contract is from Oracle for our PeopleSoft Services for both our HR side of the house and our finance side of the house. And when this contract was written 26 years ago, it was written with limitations, so we wouldn't exceed it without having to incur growth costs. And I'm going to call those expansion fees. From the finance side, we have, from either side, we've never exceeded those buffers or those ceilings, primarily because we're a declining enrollment school district and our operating budget hasn't really exceeded the threshold based on student growth like they expected it would when they wrote this. So our, our buffer for our financial capacity was hit or we exceeded that limit during the COVID timeframe because we had so much ESAR funding that our measure of operational funding is through our audited expenditures. We had, we busted that ceiling limit by less than $4 million. Now, that's not much. $4 million when we spent 70 or 80 some million dollars in ESAR money is not very much to exceed. The other, other expenditure that hurt was our, I'm sorry. When we paid off the, the bonds, when the board approved early payment of the bonds a couple of years ago, that debt service went against us. So in essence, because the board did good things with taxpayer dollars, we're penalized for exceeding a threshold. Now, this contract had a lot of ambiguity in it and didn't identify calculations very well. So we sought legal counsel to be able to clearly understand the, the expansion fee calculations that are in play right now. So our attorney, Brian Melton, was able to put some clarity in writing. So right now, the, in May, the Oracle identified about $941,000 of expansion fees that they wanted to assess us for exceeding the cap. The attorney was able to negotiate that down to $651,000 and put in clarity for how we would calculate that moving forward. Now, I don't anticipate that we're going to be in this contractual relationship for more than 18 to 24 months because we are in the process of seeking a new ERP partnership. Our new threshold that has been negotiated is $451 million. And I do not anticipate over the next year that we're going to exceed that threshold based on our audited financials in coordination with Dr. Comfort. Now, if we were to stay in this partnership for several years, we could exceed that very easily and have to spend and pay for this expansion fee. If we are in this relationship for our full COPs, that could put us in a situation where we would exceed that limit. But at this time, I don't anticipate that. So where do we go from here? This is a one-time expansion fee and we will be paying for the rest of this contract relationship, an additional $117,000 on top of our renewal fees until we are out of this contract relationship. Right now, Oracle's ordering document is, is totaling about $651,000. And the, the order for $117,000 is that continuation that we'll have to pay moving forward. I know that wasn't very clear, but if you have any questions on that, I'm happy to answer that. But that's the overview of this expansion fee. Basically, we're having to pay because we had a higher amount of expenditures on our operating budget. And, and at this time, I will turn it over if there's any questions I can answer. Or if I created more than I could resolve, I apologize.
Yeah, I just want to jump into, for the public that's listening. That is not the common way that most companies will seek escalation in licensure. It is normally based upon either the number of employees or students that are served. We have reviewed all our existing contracts across the district to make sure that there are no other balloon-type payments that are going to come up and grab us 26 years later. Thank you, Chief Odom.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chief Odom and Superintendent Gall. You've already heard the frustration in Superintendent Gall's voice out there that this is not something that benefits our students and a clause in the fine print in the original contract, which was, put together with the information that was available at that time, and added the buffer zones and the ceilings. But you end up in a situation like what we did because of the pandemic, the, and all the ESAR grant money flowing in, you hit the perfect, perfect set of conditions where we ended up $4 million over that buffer or ceiling. And then you have an external company trying to take advantage of it. I know that legal was involved in negotiating and bringing the dollar amount to a reasonable amount at this time. So thanks for all the work that went into this. It's unfortunate that we have to take care of this at this point in time. With that board, you have any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, roll call, please, Ms. Olson.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Haley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Malpackham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you for all the people in the contracts department. I see several of you online on this meeting. Thank you for all the work that you guys put in, in this regard. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, this is again a contract modification. This is modification to existing instructional empowerment contract. Director Ott, can you please make the motion for action item G4?
Yes. I move that the Board of Education approves the contract modification to Instructional Empowerment Incorporated, Contract C 2023-58, increasing the contract by an additional $349,105.12 for a total contract amount of $1,596,957.78. The period of performance for this contract modification runs from August 2024 through June 2025.
Second. Moved and seconded. Again, this is new information, Superintendent Gall.
Yeah, I bring to the board tonight a new opportunity for a continued strengthening of an existing relationship. We had some ESAR fallout dollars from the efficiencies found in our contract management of the Halbert and Queen Palmer air conditioning projects over the summer. And so we're applying that to the forward costs of our instructional empowerment relationship. And just as a summary, that's the company that we're using that's helping us on our intensive support schools, which were the high need turnaround and priority improvement schools that we started two years ago under ESAR. And then this year in the expansion of the relationship to our accelerated agency cohorts, where we're really trying to bring our students into a more active and engaged space into their learning environment. Ms. Ott, anything else to add to this?
Just that this expands coaching opportunities throughout the rest of the school year, adding these additional funds. The state was great with us as we came forward with some cost savings and capital projects to do a quick last-minute post-award revision in order to allocate these dollars again back towards a strategy that has shown success over time with our ESAR dollars. The schools in the accelerated agency cohorts will get more coaching visits and more professional development opportunities because of these additional dollars in the contract.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that feedback and report. So from what I understand, we had some efficiencies in some of the contracts with the,
We have two more items.
The capital projects that we had some efficiencies in that, and that money is being directed back to to this instructional empowerment contract. Board, any questions? I don't see any. Oh, Director Carey?
Can you just refresh my memory as to the history of this? So we had rolled this out as, at a few schools at first. And then we are rolling it out to the entire system. Am I understanding this correctly?
Close. We started with five schools in the first year that, that I arrived, what we called intensive support. Those were primarily turnaround or priority improvement schools. And then what we saw was we were getting strong growth for our students and met and decided to expand. And instead of expanding from the bottom up, we decided this year to go to what we call an accelerated cohort, where we took the executive principals in the system to try and get them to be able to bring us to scale faster instead of constantly chasing the tail. The idea was to go after the head. So we added five new schools and our secondary math and our visual and performing arts programs into this idea of really how do we codify and scale student agency? So we could go from a more direct didactic instructional mode into kind of a, a student teaming setup for classrooms. We've seen really strong success. I was just with the accelerated agency cohort principals last week. And each one of them shared a specific vignette on how this was the most impactful work they've seen to student learning in, in at least their last 10 years in education.
Are there specific metrics that you're going to be looking at as we kind of get into the spring of whether or not the program is kind of doing what you need it to do? Or are we going off of feedback from principals and teachers? Or how does, can you talk me through how you're thinking is going to work there?
Yeah, we're able to provide that as an update in the spring as part of our either mid-year or end-of-year update on our normal data. But what the instructional empowerment offers, tons of data opportunities on their rigor walks. You saw some of that kind of reduced in some of the USIPS earlier in the year, that you saw some columns and rows with different looks fours that we had not really introduced before from our academic team. But we're happy to provide that in the spring for the, for the board.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Director Nelson?
So, did I hear you correctly? We're adding five more schools and it is a combination of some of our pathway schools. And then follow-up question. So how many schools total are receiving this support? Again, to refresh.
We, we added five this year, so now we're up to 10. But we also offered this to our visual and performing arts and our secondary math teams to try and get some secondary opportunities. We will continue to look at where the areas of success are. Our goal is to be able to drive these types of agency goals and tools to all schools and to be able to do that in kind of a transition from an external partner to an internal delivered model through professional development as we transition into next year. That's why we went specifically after the executive principals, such that we would not be beholden to continued long-term expensive consultant contracts in the out years.
I remember now, I think it was our last board meeting, one recently where there was a presentation from the math team, the visual performing arts team. And so I guess my follow-up question is, is there any thought to expand it to our ELA team?
We decided this year to start with math. We certainly are looking at the difference between going leader by leader or function by function and/or a combination of the two of them. We asked in kind of a pilot program with the company to explore this idea of functional expansion. Their traditional model is to go building by building and leader by leader. But we wanted to make a play on the two areas of strength that we've had in the district over time, which have been our math, our math professional development and team, as well as our visual and performing arts. I would say that the math is an easier translation because a lot of the work that they do, school leader by school leader, is based on a traditional math and ELA classroom experience. I think we're all learning on what it means to define student agency in visual and performing arts. And a lot of that work is about actually filling in this kind of existing template, not just on a math or an ELA learning standard, but on some of the visual and performing arts learning standards that we have. So it's kind of a cutting-edge opportunity that they're giving us, you know, a reduced cost experience on that because we're kind of cutting new ground. But we think it could get us to more agency faster instead of the traditional, you got to go give PD to a new leader and then hope he keep the leader for X number of years to get through return on investment. So we're excited to see what will build into the budget next year. But at a solid third-ish of the schools right now, we hope to be able to break into more than half of our schools having those tools available for their teaching staff and students by the end of next year.
Okay, thank you.
Director Ott, I saw your hand go up a couple of times and then you don't have it up any longer?
No, my answer, I got my answers in what Superintendent Gall mentioned, which was, you know, when we might see this expanded to other schools, it sounded like within a year or so. So appreciate that.
Okay. Any other questions from the board at this point in time? So a couple of things from my side. I like the fact that we are building our internal capacity so that what we are learning from this external partner can be expanded. what we are learning from this external partner can be expanded to all our other schools as well going forth. We may not have the financial budget to support this in the future years, but we are building our internal capacity. That is good to know. Ms. Olson, remind me, put this as an agenda item in the spring to follow back on like what Superintendent Gall talked about, a follow-up on this to Director Carey's question. With that, roll call please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Haley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Mal Pakem?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The eyes have it, the contract modification has been approved by the board. So we did add an additional item to the action agenda item, which was, which happened at the top of this meeting, action item G5, which is at the last page for the board. Director Nelson, can you please make the motion for action item G5, budget transfer oracle contract?
I move that the Board of Education approves the contingency transfer for the oracle contract 98-328 in the amount of 61,000, sorry, $651,480 for expansion fees that include additional new licenses and corresponding license support and maintenance.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Director Nelson, I wish it was 61,000, but it's not unfortunately. Any any additional information on this Superintendent Gall? We already talked about this. Okay.
We've already talked about this.
Yep, thank you. Board, any further comments or questions on this topic? Seeing none, roll call please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Haley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Mal Pakem?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The eyes have it, the board has approved the contingency transfer for the amount to cover the oracle contract. Moving on to the non-action agenda item, the first item that is on the agenda is accreditation of schools with school performance framework, school performance framework rating of 74 or above. This is a celebration. Superintendent Gall?
Yeah, I see our DAC Chair Marion Clausen has joined, and we're really excited for the partnership with the DAC to be able to introduce this item on the board to celebrate the excellence in many of our schools and more than last year. Marion, to you. I think you're on mute.
Okay, good evening, Board. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Hey, it works. All right, we're super excited. That's why I wanted to come and present this item to you tonight. So we all know that the state accredited districts, but it's up to the local school boards to accredit their schools. And the school board gave the DAC the task to recommend schools for this. And in our October meeting, we had a conversation at the accreditation subcommittee, and we decided to stay with the SPS of 74, which is the one, same number the state uses for districts. So we feel like that's a good number to go with to the schools. And we had a bit of a discussion because a couple of schools were really, really close. But it's a really great achievement, and we wanted this to be a good achievement and mean something for our schools. So we're super excited to present to you guys 11 schools this year. And we hope that these schools are using this to attract more students to their schools and advertise it and celebrate it because it's a huge accomplishment for their teams and for their kids. Because it means their kids are doing great. So the schools that we recommend is our Bristol Elementary, Chippeta Elementary, Freedom Elementary, King Elementary, Madison Elementary, Queen Palmer Elementary, Rudy Elementary, Scott Elementary, Steel Elementary, Taylor Elementary, and Thomas McLaren School.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Clausen. This is indeed a celebration, and this will, just for the board, this will come as an action item at a future board meeting, and we will have representatives from these schools out there to celebrate with them at that point in time, acknowledging the hard work of their staff and presenting them with a banner which can be displayed proudly at their respective schools. Board, any questions or comments? I see a thumbs up from Director Jorgensen. And what stood out to me is the new school that we added to our portfolio this year, which is Thomas McLaren School, that has an SPF, it's a comprehensive K through 12, including secondary, middle, and high schools, and it has an SPF rating of 84.9. That is a high performance for Thomas McLaren out there. And this is an opportunity for the district also to possibly partner with Thomas McLaren and learn some of their best practices that we can implement even in our schools. Seeing no further questions, this will come as an action item at a future board meeting along with representatives of those schools to accept those awards. And we may have quite a few people at the board meeting, at the future board meeting, when we bring this up, we'll have a packed boardroom. Moving on to the next non-action agenda item, this is the mill levy rate certification that is required every year around this time. Per statute, the board must annually review and approve the mill levy rates. Superintendent Gall, I'm turning it over to you.
I was clicking on my picture to get rid of the mute. I think it's the contagion of COVID rookie. Passing it over to Dr. Comfort for this important opportunity for the board.
I will never live that down. Good evening again, Board. As President Mal Pakem stated, this is a yearly process for us. We are doing it a little differently this year. Typically, we bring this to you in non-action format right after Thanksgiving break, after the assessed value for the district has been defined. Because of the board's new board calendar process and because we want to be more proactive, we're bringing it to you earlier. We will still bring you the final numbers for action after they certify over Thanksgiving break. We feel very confident in the numbers that we're presenting to you, so we don't expect any significant changes. But that's why we're a little difference in our sequencing. Is there a power? Oh, there we go. I should have just waited. Okay. Next slide, please. So just a quick reminder for the board, we do have two MLOs in our district, the first being the 2000 MLO. And this is what we call a fixed dollar MLO, meaning in the year 2000, we got $26,998,822. And in the year 2024, we will get the exact same dollar figure. While that amount is very gracious and beneficial to our district, it does not allow for any inflation. And so one of the challenges of this is our general fund does have to come in and supplement a number of these PIPs, especially those with FTE in them. Okay, next slide. Then again, another wonderful event happened in 2017 when a $42 million MLO was passed. Again, addressing a number of needs across the district, and the board and leadership relies in that time to add an inflationary clause. And so every D11 board member since 2019 has approved the inflationary clause and allowed this portion of the MLO to grow to cover some additional costs. We'll go to the next slide. Okay, so I spoke to this a little bit, but just a reminder, last year was a wild year for mill certification because of the skyrocketing in property values. You'll remember there was a special legislative session. We had an extended deadline. There were a couple of key changes that came out of that special legislative session, one being the change in the residential assessment rate and also a reduction in property values. And so that existed for the 2324 year. It is also existing for the 2425 year. It is set to expire. We will see if any of those things continue. So now we're kind of in a blend. We're back to the original timeline. So by statute, we must certify our mill levy rates by December 15th. So we'll bring this to you for action prior to that. But we still have some of those same assessment rates and exemptions from last year. So we're living in a little bit of two scenarios. Next slide. Okay. So again, these are approximations. We feel very good with these numbers, but just to be clear, these are not the official numbers. The state certified a 5.2 inflationary rate increase for last tax year that we will collect in January. And so if we applied that 5.2%, we would get $2.694 million of additional funding to our MLO. You'll see there the little chart for the estimated impact on our taxpayer. So if you have a $300,000 home or your property value is $300,000, you would pay nine additional dollars annually to the district for this 5.2% increase. Now, I do want to be clear, we are not discussing or providing guidance on the other impacts to taxpayers' tax rates this year. This is just specifically to the district's mill levy certification. And as I said, this increased inflationary clause, what it allows, it allows us to keep up with salary and benefit increases. It allows us to address any potential charter growth, and sometimes it allows us to fund new programs or initiatives. I do want to just kind of address that first one again because what we are seeing with some of our mill levy or with some of our PIPs in our mill levy program is what started as being completely funded from the the mill levy, now the general fund is having to come in and supplement more and more. Some of our PIPs are even getting close to kind of a 50% mill levy, 50% general fund support. And so this inflationary money is really important to help address those increase in costs or potentially fund any new programs. Next slide. And then just some information, we shared this last year, we want to share it this year. Commercial property makes up about 13% of our district's tax base. You'll see here the classification rates and then the tax rates for those. So again, they stayed consistent. From last year, there are the potential that those will, those will change next year. And again, we saw that $55,000 reduction in actual value for residential properties, and it was a $30,000 reduction for commercial properties. And I believe that's my final slide.
So thank you. Board, any comments or questions at this time? Thank you, Dr. Comfort, for bringing this in front of the board. So this is something the board has to consider in December, whether to approve that inflation clause and the mill levies will will be revised accordingly. Is that correct? Correct?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
And one of the things that Dr. Comfort talked about is how the PIPs in the original 2000 MLOs, the current funding has to be, the burden is, part of it is coming from the MLO, and it has to be supplanted, supplemented with general fund dollars. So with that, Director Nelson, I saw your hand go up first.
Can you remind me, we have some discretion at where we put that increase? Am I remembering correctly? Or is it just blanketed across all of the PIPs the same amount?
No, you're correct, Director Nelson. We do have, we do have a choice in where we apply that. And so we can apply it evenly across PIPs, or we could apply it to specific PIPs, or we could use it to fund new PIPs.
Okay. I guess I would just propose that we look to, like to the board, I'm speaking to the board, that we look to administration to provide some insight on where we could strategically funnel this increase in funding. And then I'll just touch on the comment about recognizing that our current PIPs, some of them are, you know, having to be supplemented by the general fund and we want to honor what the voters approved, but also recognizing that back in 2000 or even in 2017, the needs of our students may have looked different. And so the MLO committee is going to be taking a look at some of our PIPs and just evaluating, are we getting the bang for the buck? And trying to be more intentional with the funding and aligning this MLO funding to current strategy to improve outcomes for kids rather than having a decision that was made, you know, over 20 years ago now, guiding where that funding is going. So just wanted to update the board on some of what the MLO committee is going to be tackling here in the near future, and it's exciting work.
And just to expand on Director Nelson real quick, we will take the, if the board does approve the inflationary clause this year, we will take that through the MLO committee as we did last year. And so they will, we will bring from them recommendations on where to allocate that money.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you for that update. And we look forward to that discussion that Director Nelson talked about as well. If some of the PIPs have to be looked at in a different way, the MLO Oversight Committee can have the initial discussion and then it can come to the board at a certain point in time. Director Ott?
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification that the Mill Levy Oversight Committee would be looking at that, those additional dollars. I really appreciate that. Second, a second question I was going to have was, you're referencing the, essentially the budget shortfall that these are not, the MLO funding is not paying completely what we might expect. Is that just for the 2000 mill levy override PIPs, or is it also the 2017?
Yeah, great question, Director. It's really anywhere we have FT. Because that's really where we're seeing, right? When, if you said we needed to hire 20 people to, 20 additional teachers in 2000 or in 2017, it now costs us significantly more than that. And so, Director Ott, it's actually the, we went over four or five of our PIPs related to compensation and FTE in our last MLO Oversight Committee meeting. It was the one you didn't happen to be at. But we were able to kind of showcase the comparison of a few of those that I think would, would speak to what you're looking to. So there's costs associated with all of our PIPs, but the ones where we're seeing the biggest impact on the general fund are those related to FT.
Okay, thank you. Do you still need volunteers for the Oversight Committee?
We sure do.
Okay, just throw that in there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions from the board on this topic? Seeing none, we look forward to this returning as an action item at the December meeting so the board can formally certify the mill levy rates for the 2025. Did I get that right? For the next year, right? Okay, thank you. Okay. That's the end of our meeting. So we are almost there at the end. Future agenda items for request from the board. Director?
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure we were on track for our energy audit conversation this month. We've been talking about audits, unrelated, sort of, and also our budget conversation. And my concern specifically is that we'll have enough time to hit construction, ordering deadlines, et cetera. And also because of the possibility of losing incentives that might be out there with a change in government. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks, Director Ott. We will bring that to the board in early December. We've had to delay that for the scheduled November item to bring the recommendation for the General Contractor Award for the Palmer Project. We want to continue that, that conversation and get that project completed through RFP and contract award next week. So we've had to bump the energy audit until December. But hearing the concern about change in administration and any potential impacts that that would bring. But hearing the concern about change in administration and any potential impacts that that would bring.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So that is scheduled to come in early December now and I will keep the board informed about it. Seeing no further requests, a calendar review, we do have a work session next week. That's November 13th, 2024 and November 20th, 2024. There could possibly be special meetings or executive sessions. And if so, it'll be, the board will be informed about it. And the week of 25th to the 29th is going to be district break for Thanksgiving. Okay, with that, Dr. Ott, I see your hand up.
Thank you. I, my, I apologize. Earlier, I, my computer had a meltdown and update on firmware or whatever. And so for board reports, I mentioned, or I wanted to mention just, and this kind of fits with calendar. Check out the high schools, they're having plays starting next week and the following week. And also North Middle Schools having a place and musicals and, and all the concerts. So it's that time of year. All of you and our community, I hope you'll show up and support our schools. Thank you for the, for that.
Thank you, Director Ott. And sometimes the board gets invites. Sometimes we have to check the calendar of those respective schools. And to anybody that's watching from a school, if you have a holiday program or at this point in time, any celebrations that are happening at your schools, please do send an invite to the board. And the board members may choose to attend depending upon the rest of their schedule. Okay, with that, seeing no further business, if there are no objections, this meeting will officially adjourn at 7:20 PM. Thank you.